Start with our two at-large candidates. We did a coin flip. And we're going to do two-minute and 30-second opening remarks for the candidates to introduce themselves. We did a coin flip and Kim Ellison won the flip, so Kim, please introduce yourself. And you have two minutes and 30 seconds, and Paul will be keeping time.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name is Kim Ellison. I'm the mother of four amazing children, a former teacher of alternative ed high school students in my ninth year on the Minneapolis Board of Education, and I'm running to remain an at-large director of Minneapolis School Board. Thank you for this invitation. I'm really excited to talk with you tonight. I'm excited about Minneapolis Public Schools, and I want you to be too. Our schools are producing students who can compete with others around the state in athletics, the arts, academically, and win. We have staff who are recognized nationally as being the best at what they do. We have teachers who do deeply care and commit to preserving the joy of learning. And Minneapolis Public Schools are full of inquisitive, creative, energetic children who are fully capable of learning. We, however, are a district that struggles to adequately educate a large population of our students. In Dr. Seuss's final moments, he said, "We can and we must do better than this." And I believe that we will. We will when we invest in those who educate our children. Our teachers and AEs must be respected, well-trained, well-sourced educators who understand the barriers that our children face in the classroom and in the world. We have to support our families and staff with appropriate programs, trainings, and facilities. And we need to treat our students with dignity and provide them opportunities so that they can create their futures. We will do better when we uproot the structural racism embedded in our educational systems. The board instituted an Equity and Diversity Impact Assessment, and the staff must now evaluate every new policy brought before the board. We've expanded the use of that assessment, and we look at district practices as well. I'm running for school board because I believe the district will do better, but I'll need your help. I believe that we need to get out and get people voting. I think it's important that we can create a school and a system that our children deserve and need. We need to show that the city supports our most vulnerable population. My name again is Kim Ellison, and I'm happy to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Kim. Michael?
Hi, my name's Michael Duñez, and thank you for inviting us and hosting this forum. And there's been a lot of interest in the school board race, and it's been hard to get information out and people to learn more about the candidates with the pandemic going on and the aftermath of the George Floyd murders. But I just want to start by saying that I'm not a career politician. I didn't want to run for school board, but when the district-wide reorganization started being pushed through, I looked at the policy as it was written. My background's in creating diversity and equity offices for college campus founding and running those programs. Also been a Chicano Studies professor at the University of Minnesota. And I left the university to go work in the community college system because I wanted to work more with first-generation college students, which is who I am. A first-generation college student, I came up through the public school system in both Florida and Minnesota and St. Paul. My son attended Seward Montessori from kindergarten through eighth grade and is now going to South High School. He's having a great experience, and I think it really shows the effort that teachers and staff are really dedicating to try to support students, especially in these transition moments if they're changing schools. Part of why I'm running now is because my background is in higher ed, but I've also been extensively involved in issues of education for a long time. I eventually became a dean because I wanted to put into practices that I was having with my fellow Chicano friends in college and students of color. And these conversations were all very similar about how can we make education more accessible? And how can we make sure that students of color graduate? I think there's a lot of work that can be done. I moved to Minnesota in the mid-'80s when Minneapolis and St. Paul were thriving educational centers. And for Latinos, it was known as the best place in the country to go through kindergarten through 12th grade. We found problems then because students started saying, "We feel pushed out." And now we're one of the worst places in the country for Latino students. African-Americans had a great reputation for the education in K-12, but now we're considered one of the worst districts. So I'll leave off right there, and we can move on into questions.
Wonderful. Thank you both, and I do appreciate your brevity. We've got a lot of topics that I know we want to cover and that your neighbors would like to cover as well. So we'll just jump right into questions. I'll just note for attendees, we're going to be monitoring the Q and A through the chat function. So there's that little chat bubble on the bottom of your screen. Click on that and answer your questions through the chat. Paul and I will be monitoring that and trying to get to as many questions as you can. So please use the chat. And the first question comes from one of our neighbors is about kind of picking up on the themes that you both touched on in your opening remarks about diversity. Kim, what do you consider your most important accomplishments in terms of advancing diversity in Minneapolis Public Schools? And will we do it to advance those over the next couple of years? And Michael, what would you like to be able to say you accomplished at the end of your term in the areas of diversity?
Kim, you can go first here.
Perfect, thank you, and thanks for the question. I remember a few years ago, our students came to the board, and they told us, you know, "These are students of color. We don't see ourselves reflected in the history classes and in the courses that we're being taught." At the time, Superintendent Granada Johnson said we were going to start ethnic studies courses, and which we did. And that's been one of the things I've most focused on in my years on the board. We started, we rolled them out, you know, African-American one year, you know, was a pilot, and then it was a course. And then we rolled out Indigenous, and Latino, and Southeast Asian, and West African. And we now have a full slate of ethnic studies courses. And for a while, they were being taught, students could take them, sign up for them, but they were a, it was an elective credit. And I was a teacher. I taught social studies, both American history and world history. And I know that these are not, you know, the history of people is a social studies class. And so now I felt like history was being diminished in terms of it's not a social studies credit, it's an elective credit. Well, right now, we are working on rolling out a plan so that it's offered in every school, that every student has to take a course before they graduate, and that they will, and they'll have time in their schedule to be able to do that, and we're going to fund it. And so I think that that's one of the things I'm really proud about, having work done, is our ethnic studies courses.
Michael, and yeah, what would you like to be able to say you accomplished at the end of your term in the area of diversity?
For me, what I would really like to see, there's several areas. One is building upon the beginning of ethnic studies that we've had kind of spread across the district to really move that up because it's considered a best practice for retaining and graduating students of color and BIPOC students and any student. Tucson Unified School District, they had a radical Chicano Studies program there. And their retention and graduation rates for Latino students went from one out of three staying in school and graduating to over 95%. And then they tracked, was that only with Latino students? But they found it was for African-Americans and white students who signed up for those courses as well. And it's like, how do we really institutionalize that right now? Because if you look at the budget, there's a limited amount of funds dedicated towards ethnic studies. I'd really like to see that increase so that all the schools could offer them at the various grade levels, elementary, middle school, high school, as a way to really move that forward. And I think we'd see good results, great results for retention and graduation rates for BIPOC students. The other part is I'd really like to see the equity audit being conducted on a regular basis, beginning with the CDD. It was an incomplete equity audit. We still don't know what the impact would be specifically for BIPOC students on the North Side or in the South Central Corridor, or for students with special needs and special education, learning disabilities. These are all, you know, highly at-risk. These are students that need a lot of support. And right now, the district is struggling to find that support. Special education is expensive, and we have to find ways to fund it. The other thing I'd like to accomplish in the area of diversity is really to find out why we're losing so many students. And we have over a third of our students in Minneapolis are going to charter schools or have gone outside the district. A big proportion of those, I would say disproportionately, are African-American among students on the North Side, but also Latino students on the South Central Corridor. So why are they leaving? What's pushing them out? Why do they think they would get a better education going someplace else? And then let's really look at institutionalizing programs to bring them back, funding that, give them a reason to come back to the district. And that's one of the other areas and diversity I would really like to see have an impact on.
Great, thank you both. As well, we're on the topic, kind of stick on, it's just to stay on the topic about outcomes and about equity. One, how would you measure success on these equity-based outcomes for our BIPOC communities, for communities of color? And what are two short-term and two long-term strategies that you'd employ to address some of these equity issues that you both have laid out? And Michael, we'll start with you this time and then go with Kim.
Okay. Measures of success, I mean, part of it is if we could start, you know, stop just hemorrhaging BIPOC students. That's one. We're losing quite a few every year. And right now, we have a third of all students in the city of Minneapolis aren't going to a Minneapolis Public School. They're going to a charter or to a school outside the district. Seeing, one metric is, are we losing that many students year after year? Another metric would be, are they staying in school? Are they finishing their school year? Is their grade point average increasing? Are they staying to go on to the next grade level? Are they staying in Minneapolis between elementary to middle school or middle school to high school? Those are ways to notice an increase. The other big way is really when we talk about institutionalizing it, so these programs last beyond any of us, is what's the dedicated budget for them? These are all recognized as best practices across the country. They've been tested, so let's fund them and see the positive increase that states like California and Arizona, Florida have had with institutionalizing ethnic studies more broadly in the curriculum across all grade levels, looking at bringing in more support staff to help support students in school, but also supporting teachers and principals and being able to work with students. And we're predominantly students of color, BIPOC students in this district. So let's see some funding going towards that because we know when we bring in like an African-American liaison, we're going to see positive results for students staying in school who are African-American. We don't have a Latino liaison in that capacity right now, so that would be something else that we could do and fund and institutionalize it so it doesn't disappear after one or two years in the budget. Long-term goals, we'd see, are we seeing a continued shrinking of the opportunity gap between the retention of BIPOC students and white students? Are we seeing increasing graduation rates for BIPOC students? Another way is when we start thinking about those long-term goals is are those students coming to school more regularly? And we have an absentee rate, is that decreasing? Because when students are engaged in their schools, in particular, poor and BIPOC students, they start going to school on a much more regular basis. And that's one way that we can begin to track how engaged students are in the schools.
Hi, thank you. I think I'm going to start with the long-term. I think some long-term goals. What's graduation looking like? Are we graduating more students and on time, all students? And then afterwards, what are their next goals? Short-term, I think if we look at some of, first of all, acceptance. Yeah, how are students feeling at school? So we're looking at attendance, maybe we're surveying, do they feel welcome? Are we providing, inviting environment for students to be in? I think we need to look at literacy is super important. I think if we focus on some of the basics, start with literacy. How are students? How are we treating students? Are we teaching students well? I don't think you want to switch goals every few years. That doesn't work for students. I think if we pick something like reading, the socially emotional learning, the feeling of welcome, I measure those things. I think that's important for our students. And that's one way, a couple of things I would be looking at to see how we're doing with our students. Thank you.
Couple of questions from the chat, and I think specifically about CDD. So now that that is the policy of the district, what can we expect over the next year and then the next couple of years in implementing the changes that were voted on this spring? So the questions were, Kim, why did you vote for CDD? And Michael, why don't you support CD? And what are your plans? Or how do you envision, now that we do have this as a policy, what do the next couple of years look like? We'll start with Kim on this one, yes?
Thank you. Yes, we needed to centralize our magnets. That was super important. All our students didn't have access, equitable access, to some of our specialized programs. And so by centralizing our magnets, I think that was one thing that I was super excited about. And then also, I think it's important, a student shouldn't have to leave their neighborhood to find a good education. And so by going to neighborhood schools, if a child does not want to go to a magnet school, by focusing on neighborhood schools, making sure that the schools have the resources they need, by taking the money that we're spending on busing children all over the city and putting that money into the schools so we can focus on the teaching and the supports that students have in the schools for counseling, teaching, learning, is some of the things that I think, as a former teacher, important to spend money on. And then going forward, Superintendent said that he would need a year and a half to implement. And the board has been clear, if during a pandemic, you know, it takes longer than that, let us know. But every month, the board is getting updates on how the CDD implementation is going. Staff is very excited. They're moving forward. They're like, nope, we will be ready in 2021 to implement the comprehensive district design. And I'm all for supporting the work that they're doing on that. I'm excited that junior high students will have more access to athletics, that we're putting more money into counseling supports as well. These are just a couple of things that convinced me that it's a good, important thing to support, so.
Michael?
Okay, so why I'm against the CDD? Why don't I think it's a good plan? I think the intention is good about, you know, increasing equity across the district. But the way the policy is written, the plan is written, that it can't, it's not set up to do that. It's, the budget is not transparent. For example, the busing budget. We were told that we would save on busing, and then we could use that money to help fund these other programs, especially on the North Side. One of my concerns about that, when I looked at the busing budget, just this summer, at the beginning of the summer, I think it was the Finance Committee meeting, we were told that the district was predicted to lose 300 students for this coming academic year. And the money being saved for busing wasn't adding up. Excuse me, the money in the budget from losing 300 students, we were showing an increased revenue from students. And it didn't make sense because if we're losing 300 students, our student revenue should be decreasing, not increasing. And when board members asked about it, Carrie Jo Felder and Walzer, they weren't given a direct and never given an answer. And that's a foundational budget question. You say this is going to happen, but the numbers are going in opposite directions. It doesn't make sense. It's a huge red flag. And so that just calls into question other issues about the budget. So that's one of the examples about why I don't support it. In addition, I've also worked construction when I was younger and overseen some construction, a construction project later in my career. And one of the things, when I looked at the budget for what was set aside for revenue for renovating buildings, it seemed low because there's so many in the district. And the district still hasn't revealed who provided the quote for how much it was going to cost to renovate these school buildings to implement the CDD. So for me, that's also a huge red flag. And then when the, we were always pressing for, what's the five-year, 10-year budget forecast for this? And we were never given that. And then finally, it was given, in a year or five, the district was going to be plagued by the Department of Education in Minnesota because it was going to be out of balance in its budget, which is hugely dangerous because the Department of Education would approve any bonding bill to complete the renovations. So coming from a construction background, it's like you start to do something, and the money dries up, you can't finish the project. That was one issue. The other thing was, it was based around equity issues. And the only thing that was in the plan that was a best practice that was receiving any stable funding were some ethnic studies monies. Those monies weren't enough. It's coming from someone who's worked in ethnic studies and has been dealing with equity and diversity and ethnic studies issues for most of my professional career. The money was not enough to expand it across more than just a handful of schools in the way it should be. What also concerned me was if this was really going to address equity issues to really help tackle the opportunity gap between BIPOC and white students, there was no solid guaranteed funding for the academic end. How is this going to be implemented for teachers to get more training? That wasn't in the budget. What was going to happen to help support students? We know one of the biggest things is providing more support staff to really improve BIPOC student performance. We weren't seeing that in this plan. So the things that we see as best practices across the country weren't there. Immersion learning, the North Side definitely deserves an immersion learning program. They've been asking for it for a long time in Spanish and Chinese. And what we're looking at is shrinking of immersion programs in one school to try to do it in another school without even thinking about how can we spread the resources of the district so that we can create an immersion program for the North Side while maintaining the current immersion programs we have. Immersion programs are wonderful tools for improving Latino enrollment, retention, graduation rates, and success rates in school. They're also great to help other people learn Spanish and to help their long-term academic performance. But that's a common practice. It's a best practice, and it's not being funded the way it should be. So part of what I always ask is, if you really want to see the intention of any plan, what does the budget show? And this is from my career as being in higher ed a long time, from being a student activist when I was a college student, just never seeing the funds. And when we have guaranteed funding to do these best practices, we've always seen a positive increase in students of color in their retention rates and graduation rates. So let's see that. Let's begin to do that in the district. So those are several reasons why I'm against it. You know, there's many more, but coming from a policy background, policy analyst background, I think those cover the main issues for me, for why I'm against it.
Great, and thank you. So let's stay on the topic of budget. We had a question earlier from a neighbor. Funding requirements for MPS continue to grow while income falls. We know that revenue decreases when students depart the district because money is attached to students due to COVID and factors surrounding school quality and CDD. How do we anticipate funding the CDD in the coming years? And what will we specifically be doing to address some of the budgetary issues that are going to help close the achievement gap? Let's start with Michael on that one.
Can you repeat that again? So the last part?
Sorry, just more specifics on the budget. How are we going to make those resources available? And what's your plan to drive that on the board?
On the budget, my biggest plan is start making the budget much more transparent. Right now, the board members are receiving, you know, sort of budget updates one week before a board meeting. Most of them would like to receive it a little sooner so they have time to review it and to have other outside agencies, partners, take a look, the public, what's the feedback coming in? We're really blessed in Minneapolis to have a lot of professionals who want to dedicate and give their time to help K-12 education. But my biggest issue has always been around transparency of the budget. The CDD budget, for example, changed five times within three weeks with no substantial reason for why it changed. And these weren't small changes. These were changes that were several million dollars in very different areas. So I really want to bring transparency to the budget. I want to see that budget released earlier. I want to also end the practice of board members no longer getting direct answers to budgetary questions. And you can go back through all these budget meetings, and that's been going on for a while now. And it never used to be the case, when we think about when Minneapolis was really the gold standard for K-12 education, when board members would ask a budget question, it would be answered. And any board member would tell you, if I ever have a question on the budget, it needs to be answered. It's unacceptable for that not to be answered because we're representing the people who elected us. We're representing the oversight of the district, and we can't perform an oversight function without knowing what the budget is. We have numbers for the CDD, for example, which is going to become the de facto budget for the district because it's been passed. And we don't have the baseline numbers to know, is the transportation budget going to change as much as they tell us and change in the direction they tell us? Because we don't have the foundational number for comparison. It's more of an accounting type of question. It can be boring. But when we're thinking about the long-term viability of the district, it's extremely important. Our budget allows us to spread and share resources, knowing what they are. So for example, there's a lot of talk about North Side not receiving adequate resources, and they're right. They haven't been. And they've been fighting for it for a long time. Yet, when Carrie Jo and the principals and two students and their families and teachers organize to have their opinions documented and say, this is what the problems are, and these are our recommended solutions, we don't see that enrolled into the CDD. We just see it brushed aside, and they're the ones living it. There are also a district, you know, an area of the city that's filled with tons of activists who have tons of experience. And how do we equalize resources in an equitable fashion? They've also been tackling racial disparities in all sorts of professions, whether they're doing it professionally or they're living it. And they really deserve to be listened to. So what also bothers me is, we have a lot of, and I've talked, when I've been going around talking to families and going to schools, we have a lot of other areas of the city who are willing to share their limited resources to try to help subsidize the North Side. But we're not experimenting or trying that. It's a very top-down administration approach to solving problems. And my background and the work I've done has always been much more grassroots-based, community-based. How do we engage communities to help structure solutions to problems, help identify problems? I led a statewide study on the criminal justice system and racial disparities in Minnesota. We were the first ones to document Minnesota was the worst state in the country for racial disparities. And that didn't happen last year. It happened in 1999. And we faced tremendous amount of pushbacks. We wanted to bring in ex-felons to come in into our policy groups to... Problem is, and what their solutions are. And those are all recognized best practices today in how to reduce that racial disparity in law enforcement. I want to do the same in education.
Thanks, Michael. Kim?
Yes, thank you. We are not out of compliance with our capital improvements. Those are old numbers. But our money grows with enrollment, and we need to have programs that our families want to attend, and that will increase our enrollment and then therefore increase our money. But we have an issue with special ed, which is completely underfunded from the national and state government. I mean, we've got, by like $30 million, like millions of dollars, it's underfunded. But we still provide the, we still provide the programming for our students and the services to our students, and so that comes out of our general fund. So if we can, we have, I've been, the district has been lobbying the state government to adequately fund special education. I think that's a big issue for our district. And that's where a lot of our deficits come from, is the underfunding of our special education right now. I think if we can increase that, it'll be an effective way to meet the needs of all our students, not just our specialized, but our general ed as well.
Kevin, I just want to interject. We have about 12 minutes left of the at-large candidate Q and A section and we have a handful of questions left. So I'm going to keep strict track of the time here. And we'll do about 90 seconds per response for the remaining questions that we have. And I'll put my hand up when there's 10 seconds left.
Great, thanks, Paul. And I will, in the interest of that, yeah, let's get back to some of the other questions. So kind of specifically on CDs, some of the issues that have come up, specifically the impact on international baccalaureate for high schools. What does that mean for the district's commitment to IB moving forward? Sorry, start with Kim.
Yes, the district is committed to IB. And we make sure that we have a strong IB program in both parts of our city, our north and our south area. And I don't know if I have anything to add to that. It's not at risk in the near future. Nothing's at risk for the IB program.
Michael, if you were elected, IB.
Yeah, I'd like to see the IB programs continue currently. I also think that, you know, when we look at trying to create programs that families want to come back to Minneapolis for, and I think there's a false perception that in different communities that it's all white families who have fled or it's only families of color. The fact is we've lost students all over the place from all sorts of racial backgrounds. For me, want to keep IB programs. And I think a lot of families want them once they learn about them. And it's part of creating schools in a district that people want to go to and send their kids to and children want to go to as well. So, you know, I think, you know, when we think about how do we stop losing students and how do we start bringing students back? You know, an IB program, I think, is one of those areas that deserves further consideration as well as immersion programs.
So another issue that came up in the chat was the trades programs. How will that look under the new CDD? And what are your commitments to the trades programs? Michael, we'll start with you and then Kim.
I remember I was in high school when the trade programs and VOTEC programs are very active. And I enrolled in the electrician program right away because I thought I was going to be an electrician as a possibility for my career. A lot of my friends, especially the men and, you know, students of color, were coming to school because of the VOTEC program. So if we look at issues that we can improve on for increasing retention rates of BIPOC students, the trade programs are a great program. And I'd like to see them spread out more across the district instead of a heavy concentration thinking about just bus and travel time for students to move from their school to a trade program really becomes extremely disruptive. Some students would be on the bus almost two hours, depending what part of the city they're coming from and what time of the day. That's a real interruption for their education. And they have to be really dedicated to that VOTEC program that maybe they're just learning about for the first time. But no, I'd like to see the VOTEC and vocational programs expanded actually more across the city and working with partners in the city to do that.
Specifically on trades.
Yes, we're expanding trades under the comprehensive district design. And in addition to that, we, earlier on, we're doing, we've talked about doing introductory. What are the trades? So as early as junior high, eighth grade, ninth grade, giving students an opportunity to be expanded, to be introduced to the trades. You know, a lot of our students learn best when they're doing. And so I'm excited about the expansion of trades within the CDD. So that's going to be happening shortly.
Right. So I think we've got about three minutes and then we're going to give each of the candidates time to kind of give a closing remark. And I think this is the topic that's come up a few times. Our community is under huge stress due to the pandemic. Schools, teachers, parents and students are struggling. Also, those who are most vulnerable, those who are suffering the most. I was going through a CDD and appropriate response given the climate they were living in. And also families are leaving the district due to CDD and the pandemic and not feeling heard. What are your messages to families and teachers and who are struggling? And how are we going to come out of this pandemic together and stronger? And how are we going to ensure that the educational outcomes are, we're not exacerbating existing inequities? We'll start with Kim on that one.
Sure, we're all struggling. This is not something that we saw coming. It's not something we've been through, but we're learning every day. And for families who are struggling with the scheduling or they don't have access, adequate access, talk to your principals. The district is supporting all of those. Like I said, this is all brand new to all of us. And so we don't know what the struggles are. So you talk to your principals, our associate superintendents, bring it back to the district. And we're answering those questions and we're providing resources for folks that needed. Everybody has a device. That was a huge issue in the spring, but we were able to overcome that. And we started the school year making sure that every family that needed a device had a device. The connectivity to the internet is important. And we're providing hotspots for families who say they don't have Wi-Fi at home. So the one issue I hear most often is the scheduling. And either it's overwhelming or I'm not getting enough contact. And to that, I would say, talk to your principal because those are things that can change at the school level where families and staff know best and have the closest connection to what's going on. And there was another part of that that I missed.
Yeah, with the equity issues and then.
We're at time, Kevin, sorry.
Sorry, okay.
Thanks, Michael.
I mean, we're on uncharted times. Everyone knows that. It's the pandemic. Kids aren't in school, families, you know, working from home or worrying about their kids who are home while they're working. You know, and it's not ideal, but I think one thing that's really become consistent is we have our students and families, but we also have our employees in the district. We have teachers, we have staff who are also extremely worried about their access. There's, when we think about supporting students, it's, you know, we have in the midst of this pandemic, a complete restructure of the school district that's slated to go into effect after this year. So we're going to be exasperated, we're going to make that problem even worse for students and their families feeling less centered, less stable. A lot of students are going to be going to new schools. And it's not going to be wealthy Southwest parents who are going to be forced to leave. The overwhelming amount of students who are going to be forced to go to new schools are African-American and Asian-American, primarily Hmong students and Latino students on the North Side and the North Central Corridor and then as well in the South Central Corridor. And those are primarily BIPOC families and they're primarily poor. They're going to be further disrupted. And when we start looking at both the South and the North, these areas are going to face the most disruption, had the most disruption with the George Floyd uprising. I think the school really needs to, the district needs to stop, bring in more support staff, which is what teachers, educators, principals and families have been asking for a long, long time. And this is when our students really need it. This is how we keep those students and their families and bring some sense of stability so they stay with the district.
Thanks, Michael. Well, let's give each of you an opportunity to sort of just sum things up. And we'll do two-minute closing remarks. Kim, starting with you.
Okay, thank you again for the invitation to come talk with the neighborhood and constituents and residents and parents. This is a tough time for everybody and I recognize that. But it's important that we try to keep as much normalcy as possible for our students. And school is a big piece of that. We will be bringing some families back, some students back into the building soon as things get safer for our students and for families and communities. Want to say that, I don't know, we don't know when this is going to end, but our family, our teachers and our staff are working really hard to make sure that schooling is as effective and as supportive as possible for our families right now, for our children. So again, thank you for letting me be a part of this and I hope we have other conversations in the future.
Thank you, Kim. Michael, two minutes.
Even though, you know, I may talk about a lot that's wrong with the CDD plan and the new direction the district is moving, talking about moving students and families around when they need the stability, that's when they do best. But what the other thing is, I'm actually really optimistic about what can be done at the school board level to have a positive change. Bring an increased transparency to a budget. The numbers don't lie. And once they're revealed for what they really are, then that's something that we all know and that our community organizations, our educational activists can really latch on to and say, well, there is in fact money to hire more social workers in a school than what we're being told. We have a lot of policy tools. Our district was a thriving example for many, many years. And those tools haven't gone away. I'd like to bring my policy experience and my experience as administrator and really as a student activist who used to bounce up against people who said, we can't hire faculty of color. We can't bring in ethnic studies. And tell them, these are the ways that you do it. We know it works because it's worked in other places in the country. This is nothing new. We're suffering more than other places in the country because of our opportunity gap. And there's a lot of policy tools to bring transparency to the budget, really beginning to hardline and provide dedicated funding to change that will make a difference to retain and graduate our BIPOC students and really help reduce that opportunity gap. I'm also extremely concerned about special ed. They're the one, those students react the most to any educational change or any geographic change, any room change. And they're going to be asked to make all these changes. What's going to happen to them? And we really need to approach that because by law, we have to educate them and provide them what they deserve. The same thing happened with American Indian students. We have American Indian studies in our schools because it was a lawsuit. And now all the schools have to do it. And we're seeing positive results for American Indian students.
Well, on behalf of the neighborhood and our fellow neighbors, thank you both for making the time to sit with us. I know it's a lot to cover in a shorter period of time. And thank you again for joining us tonight. Encourage folks out there to check out their respective websites and learn more about the candidates. There's a great pollen feature that talked about some of the different things. So if you want to learn more, great resources out there. But Michael and Kim, thank you so much for being with us and for your commitment to our students. So with that, we're going to shift over to our District Four candidates. We're very excited to have Adriana Serrillo and Krista Mims here to talk to us a little bit about some of these topics and put more of a perspective on District Four. So we're going to do opening remarks and we're going to start with, by coin flip, Krista Mims. Krista.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for hosting this event and attending this forum tonight. It is a treat to get to interact with some neighbors and get to actually have some dialogue here in our pandemic world we're living in. My name's Krista Mims and I'm running for school board in District Four. I grew up in Minnesota and attended public schools. I spent some of my adult years in Seattle, Washington. And then, as all Minnesotans do, I came back. I've been back in Minnesota since 2017 and I've worked for Hennepin County since I returned as a social worker in our child protection system, working with Indigenous youth and families. I also lead work to reduce racial disparities in education, specifically focused on our young people that are in our county systems. So that looks like youth who are in foster care, who are in juvenile probation, teen parents, truant students, some of our least resourced students and families. It's with those kind of two lenses of this disparity reduction focus as well as my social work passions and background, that was really what brought me to run for school board. I was seeing the amazing school environment that some of my kids were receiving in schools when they were going through completely tumultuous times, as many are right now. I also saw discipline disparities in action. I saw my kids not getting time in school. I saw them not being believed in. And it really, being immersed in that sort of data world where we see those racial disparities and we cannot ignore them. And then also being there as an advocate with our young people day to day and seeing how we can have so much power in our school systems. I really felt called to come to the school board and provide a voice for those young people and families who don't feel seen in our current school systems. I think we have a long way to go to truly engage our communities and ensure that they're reflected in our practices and our policymaking and our decision-making. I want to be here to advocate for youth and families. And I think that we can do better and provide an excellent education system in our Minneapolis public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Adriana?
Buenas noches, good evening. My name is Adriana Serrillo. Originally from Reynosa, Tamaulipas, Mexico. We moved to Brownsville, Texas in 1988 because my mother wanted to provide better opportunities for the family. I lived in Florida for 20 years where I had my two daughters. And in 2007, I founded a nonprofit. And three years later, I co-founded an academy for youth, Future Leadership Academy, which is an academy comprehensive college prep. Because to me, it is crucial that we do provide the opportunities for youth that don't have traditionally the support within the system to be successful. I have been in Minneapolis since 2013. And from 2014 to 2016, I served in the Police Oversight Commission, a commission that has no teeth whatsoever. But the incredible thing that we did together was to provide recommendations to the city council and the police department to implement the body cameras that currently police officers use. And I'm also a business owner. For the last two years, I have been a family advocate. I provided support to families that have children in Minneapolis schools. And that was providing that one-on-one support for them to understand how to navigate the educational system and to make the best decisions that met the family needs as well. And I connected them to resources as well. And also, for the last two years, I have been the guardian of one of my nephews. He's a student at Emerson Spanish Dual Immersion School, where I am a PTA and side council member as well. And I have been very instrumental in demanding to the district to provide interpreters for our diverse communities and families. Thank you.
Thank you both. Looking forward to the conversation. Yes, let's jump right in and talk a bit about the CDD. How you see CDD, how you view CDD. And now that is the policy, how do you anticipate advocating for District Four residents under the new CDD policy? Start with Adriana, please.
Yeah, I would like to start by saying that without the activism and the bravery of parents demanding the district to provide those interpreters and to bring forward an awareness that the CDD was going to be passed without any community input, zero. And because of our activism and demanding the district to be more transparent and to do authentic community engagement, I am glad, you know, that we are where we are. My feelings, I strongly opposed it. I did, because of the lack of honesty and also transparency. This, you know, in my opinion, had nothing to do with, you know, bringing equity, if not to save money on transportation. And I would have had appreciated the fact that to have, you know, that reality put forward and upfront. But moving forward, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful because our community now is aware. And we have to really look at the details of the implementations. So bringing families together, you know, to make decisions and also students to be part of those decisions is crucial and important. So I'm hopeful because what I have seen in our community, because we are the ones that are dictating what is going to be the CDD implementation. Thank you.
Krista?
Thank you. I would echo that, you know, I am also seeing right now, our families are going through a lot. I see that at my work, I see that with my friends and neighbors. I know that the CDD, even just in concept, is very upsetting, thinking about making these changes and taking away any stability for a young person. Now that the CDD has passed, it is so important that we are bringing our communities together, that we are sharing in decision making. We are providing transparent information, that we're actually engaging our communities who didn't get to have a voice in the process. And we really need to be intentional and think about where we can share power, where we can share power with our communities, with our schools, with our teachers, with our students. Because that has not been clear in previous listening sessions and previous engagement from my vantage point. I really want to make sure that as these transitions happen, since it has passed, we need to find creative ways to go out to our community organizations, through our community leaders, to really engage and make that language accessible. As my opponent Adriana mentioned, that translation service is so important. We need to have information. Our families need information. This transition will be so much harder and so much more difficult and we will lose students if we can't provide that transparent communication. And we can't provide a place where our families think that their students can succeed. That is the fundamental thing. We need to make sure that all of our schools are going to provide that excellent education. And we're making a bunch of switches. We gotta, we gotta produce the goods. So I think that that piece is going to be really important.
Great. And a follow up about that, sort of maybe two short term and two longer term recommendations for approaching CDD. One of our neighbors asked, should the implementation be slowed down? So starting with, should we slow down the implementation, then two short term, two long term approaches that you take to ensure that authentic community engagement? And we're getting the outcomes that we're all looking for. Let's start with Krista there.
Sure. I think that we have to provide enough time to meaningfully engage with our families and our communities. So we need to figure out what those metrics are that we want to ensure that we're reaching families, that we're reaching teachers, that we're reaching people that did not get engaged. And if that means slowing down, then that's what we should do. But I will say, we have to provide that space and time for our families to understand what's going on, to be able to weigh in on how this is impacting their family. And for us to respond as accountable as to how we can make this transition better for their family. And then as far as, I think it was two short term and two long term goals?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think in the short term, I mean, definitely that engagement piece. So how are we ensuring that our families who don't respond to surveys and aren't seeing surveys, aren't able to come to these community forums? How do we provide the accountability that we are engaging with them? I think we have to set in place some kind of measure for that as a short term goal, that we're engaging all of our families. I think that we should also be looking at, as we transition, what's happening with our funding and our resources? We know that this plan has been laid out with the charge of equity. So how are we ensuring that our least resourced families and communities are in fact benefiting from these changes? So I think that that's another place we need to be looking and checking. What I would always love to see is more qualitative and quantitative data around the experience of our BIPOC communities in our schools. I think that is something that we really need to focus on because we know that's where we are losing many students. We need to give them an authentic voice in our community so that they can be part of the community, be part of solutions and really move our district forward. Another long-term goal that I have, of course, is always that our students are performing, that they have rigorous academic expectations placed on them. They've got the opportunity to show their different skills throughout our academic process and that we are honoring and valuing each and every student through that engagement. So I want to see our kids thriving and our families thriving. Thank you.
Adriana?
Thank you. Yes, if this is going to affect our children, you know, to slow down the process, I would say no. I mean, we're still like not very clear, to be honest with you, I mean, myself as a parent. I don't feel like we are very honest with the conversation of what is going to happen or not when it comes to the budget allocation. So for me, the long-term goals that I do have is allocating funding specifically for counselors, for more therapists onsite. And also to access the behavioral and academic goals more at the individual level to provide that one-on-one support for our students. You know, this is, it has to do with the fact that students that are affected do receive the resources that they do deserve. The short-term goal is, as Krista mentioned, is to bring our families to the table and for them to be part of these conversations. And specifically, many of the immigrant community, you know, they're still like, they don't know what's going on. They have that language barrier and they are still like up in the air. They have no idea what the district is going to be doing or what plans they have in mind. So providing that transparency is important, is crucial. Thank you.
Thank you both. The issue of sort of the international baccalaureate has come up a number of times in the conversation tonight and would love to hear both of your thoughts on IB as a moving forward. And, you know, what your, what your plans would be for IB and then more broadly about well-rounded experiential education. And are there models within District Four and the city that we should be looking at expanding? If it's not IB, what else should we be looking at? Let's start with Adriana on this one.
Thank you. Definitely, as Kim Melson and Michael Duñez answered, we definitely need to expand on the IB program, definitely. Specifically in District Four, I'm a big proponent of dual immersion education. That is something that affects our community, District Four, the most. But yes, definitely expanding the IB program. That is, I mean, but as it is currently right now, Minneapolis, we need to be very honest with each other. I mean, we're not even providing an equitable education for students, period. You know, so before we can even have a conversation about extending the IB program, we start providing an equitable education for all students. And it has to do with the funding that we do not have in our district. Thank you.
I would echo. I think that IB schools are extremely valuable and I think that they're a model that really has been successful for so many. And I think that we should expand so long as that's meeting the needs of the community and needing, meeting the needs of the students that are being served by those programs. As far as other kind of educational models, of course, immersion schools are fantastic. I love the power of learning languages and being able to connect with others in their own language and culture. I think that is something that our young people extremely benefit from having that experience. Another model that I do really appreciate, especially coming from my social work background, is that full-service community school, where there are resources available for families, where it can be a one-stop community shop for the school to be the hub as part of a community. And I've seen that that type of system be really effective. And I think that's another model that's very much worth exploring.
Wonderful. Specifically in our District Four schools, different approaches and sort of talk a little bit about how you'll approach. So Whittier will be no longer an IB, will be a community school. Talk through some of the different changes that'll be happening in CDD and how you envisioning that either strengthening or weakening sort of the, even in the short term or the medium term, the long term, how we're going to approach sort of the short-term challenges for the long-term goals around some of these different examples. And we'll start with Krista on this one.
Absolutely. I think that we really need to be engaging, again, not to be a broken record, but really engaging with our communities through this process. As we feel like we are losing things within our schools, like that IB program. We need to ensure that students' needs are being met and that the educational opportunities that they have are excellent, equitable and are reflecting our community, our community in District Four. I know that there's a lot of complexity to the CDD's changes. And I really think, I really hope that there is room for us to develop our unique District Four identity and really ensure that our schools still have the excellent education, pride and programming that is important to them. So I think that this, we have to continue through our community conversations to make sure that as we are approaching different changes, what's happening, what's the impact and how can we respond? How can we mitigate some of those problems that our families are really fearful of right now? Thank you.
Adriana?
Yes, so we have to talk about, for example, Jefferson. Jefferson, we're going to lose a lot of those students. They're going to end up going to Anderson because of the one-strength program for the immersion. A lot of changes and the problem in here is, for example, at Emerson, where we are, you know, family right now. So our last principal left and we had an interim principal and we were very fortunate to inherit Jim Clark. He used to be the principal at Wyndham. And that is incredible. That is beautiful because he has the experience of being a principal in a dual immersion school. However, that is not the case for all the schools in District Four. At Jefferson, you know, we might end up having principals that don't have the knowledge and the tools to deal with all the changes that the CDD is going to bring to our families. So the problem is that we're moving students, right? Because the programs are going to be, for example, to Anderson, right? But not to Emerson. So neighborhood schools will strengthen allegedly the neighborhood. And the children will go to schools with the neighborhood friends, right? That's what we hear from the district. But that's not really the case. So District Four, you know, like Whittier, is going to be a community school. That is, okay, that is great. That is incredible. However, a lot of the students and the families that don't even know of all the changes that are going to be coming are still like, you know, not part of the conversation of how that is going to affect them directly. So to me, it's going to be crucial that as a board director, you know, for us to come and engage with those families to have them understand how it's going to affect them directly. So I don't know if that makes sense, you know, it's just very confusing through this whole process of the CDD implementation because it's really changing students and programs. But we are, we're going to end up with some principals that don't have the capacity to deal with that reality.
Thank you. And I think that brings up a really interesting topic, which is sort of data and metrics and measurement. How do we, how do we, how do we measure success, both at our schools but also as a district? So how will you hold the superintendent accountable as a member of the board of directors? And what are the data and metrics that we should be using, both at the site level but also at the district level, to ensure that we're making progress? And what would be the ones you'd prioritize as a board member? Krista, we'll start with you on this.
Thank you. So I think we've got to, this is a two-part answer, but I think we've got to continue to expect, you know, better academic outcomes through our schools. That, we know that is an issue. We know that is especially an issue for our kids of color. I think that we, in my imagination of how we could be measuring our young people, we need to honor and value other skills that are not currently valued in our systems. So I think that there needs to be a way to capture what is unique and special about our schools? What is unique and special about our students? How does that help them be more successful in our schools? And how can we promote that and bridge the gap between those inherent skills that they are displaying to the academic kind of tests and things that we're asking them to do? I think the other piece that we should be measuring, of course, is our enrollment, our BIPOC families' experience, all of our families' experiences, really. I think that and staff and teacher experience, administrator experience. We need to really change the culture of our schools. We need to make it so that that culture of our schools is a welcoming place for all levels of school, all levels of staff, all levels of students. So I think that there needs to be some amount of measure based on that piece. I also think that, you know, with the CDD, we need to have clear goals about what we're accomplishing in a year-by-year process. And if we are not meeting those goals, there needs to be some action that we take. I think that that, the measurement and accountability, if we don't set clear goals for what we envision from this process, we won't see the goals because that's not what we're working towards. So I really think that that's going to be important to hold our superintendent accountable to the goals and vision and the metrics of this plan to ensure that we did this for a reason, right? The thing about that also is that we know that there won't be results overnight. So how can we build in these interim measures of success where our families and our students and our staff feel like they are valued and welcomed? And that they feel like this could have been a positive change? I'm hoping that because the district is going through this, that we can take this as an opportunity to look at how we do our current practices and make them more equitable. To look at how our families and students are accessing our education system and make it more accessible. It's a time where, you know, in change, we've got an opportunity to do something different. So I'm hoping that we can take those moments of opportunity and really engage with people who are experiencing our system and make it better. Make it a better place for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Adriana?
When I think of this question, Kevin, to me, it's like a very like white supremacist version of measuring things. For me, for example, how do I measure, you know, it's the school climate, as Krista mentioned, you know, for me, the welcoming environment that we do have, you know, when we come into our schools. When I was a family advocate, I remember walking into some schools that people were not even greeted. Not even like, hi, good morning, how are you doing? You know, that is really important for our families to feel welcome in the spaces where our students are currently attending. You know, that it's important, it's crucial. And also, for example, at Emerson, when I came to Emerson to the first side council meeting, we had no representation of brown families at all, zero whatsoever. So that's a way for me to like understand like how do we measure that we are equitably bringing people to the table to have real conversations. So I was very instrumental in transforming our side council and PTA membership. And also hiring and maintaining teachers of color. You know, that's a way of how do we measure ourselves and understanding that we are meeting the needs of families of color, especially, you know, of immigrant families too. How do we hold the superintendent accountable? Are we retaining students in our district or not? If we're losing them, I mean, he needs to be held accountable to a standard that if our students are not achieving, that means that he is failing that. And that we need to be very clear and say that the superintendent is responsible for the failure of our students. is responsible for the failure of our students. Thank you.
Thank you both. Question from the chat, what makes District Four unique? And how do we allow for differences across the district? Start with Adriana, please.
District Four is very unique, and that's one of the reasons that I decided to run for office because we don't have representation on the board currently. Whittier is, we have 80% of the students are students of color. And a high percentage of them are Latino students. And also at Emerson, you know, 70% of our students are Latino descent. You know, many of our families don't speak the language. And therefore, we cannot even communicate and have authentic community engagement. Fair High School in downtown, you know, it's an incredible school, mostly African-Americans. But it's actually a school that we, that I tried to put my youngest daughter when we moved to Minnesota, and it was impossible to get her in there. But that is an incredible place where a lot of our students thrive. And yes, so what is unique is the diversity, the beauty, and the wealth of the cultural backgrounds of what makes Minneapolis unique and beautiful. Thank you.
You said it so well, Adriana. District Four, I would echo that. There is so much diversity in many different ways. Our community, our geographic area represents so many different types of communities, different types of lifestyles, different types of people. And I think that that is a really beautiful thing, where we have so many of those different communities that can come together and experience each other. Adriana so eloquently mentioned, you know, we have some really fantastic schools. We've got a lot of kids of color. We also have a lot of athletes within our district as well. I think that we have to really think about what is unique about our different areas? What is, how do we focus and center equity when we're making decisions with the schools in our district? How do we celebrate and resource the schools that need additional support from us? And how do we ensure that all of our schools and our school communities in our district feel like they have an equal voice? And I don't think that's been the case, you know, historically. So how do we make this a better community of people together that all get to have a voice in the process? Thank you.
And sort of in follow-up to that, you both have had experience living outside of Minnesota. What would you bring, what sort of best practice or what ideas or models would you bring in from outside of the state to help us achieve what are some fairly woefully bad metrics on equity? Krista, starting with you.
Absolutely. Coming from Seattle, I think they have put together some really great examples of being transparent. So when I look at the King County website, and I'm looking into their racial disparities, which they also have, something that they have really modeled, and I think, you know, for myself at the county, really modeling how to be transparent with what's actually happening for our residents, what's actually happening for our communities. I think there's so much power and access to information. That's one big thing that I would like to bring, and I think is really applicable at the school board, because we need to be transparent with our decisions. We need to be transparent with the information we're using to make decisions. And we need to be transparent about how we're going to engage in those processes with our residents, with our communities. You know, we all know about the racial disparities in our schools, but I don't think, I think we hide from them a lot. And it's hard to deal with. But we have to stare them in the face so that we can make sustainable change, that we can take action, so that we can put in metrics and measures, put in places where our communities can feel like they're heard in this process. We cannot continue with the disparities that we have right now. It has to stop. So I think I would bring that model of transparency from Seattle, from King County, that I think has really been serving them well in their journey of reducing racial disparities in their area.
Thank you, Krista and Adriana.
What do I bring? I bring my passion, I bring my knowledge. I mean, first of all, I'm an immigrant, and I can relate to them, her voices of many of our community members. Yes, I mean, it's just my wealth of knowledge and experience. When I moved to Minneapolis in 2013, and I actually got engaged organizing the community in Chaska for a police officer that was racially profiling Latinos. And to me, that was the pivotal moment to really understand that Minneapolis is an incredible place. It's a very fertile land for positive change. When I started in the Police Oversight Commission, you know, I was the person that I was pushed, you know, for all of us as commissioners to strive, you know, to do better, to hold each other to higher standards. And, you know, it's just, to me, what is really important is that we continue to implement a diverse curriculum and that other school districts are doing better. You know, I'm a mother, as I mentioned, my daughters were born and raised in Florida. They attended a math school in elementary years. And we had the most incredible experience because the principal, the leadership, was incredible beyond belief, you know? So to me, it's the experience that I bring forward as a mother as well. It's something that is, you cannot take that very lightly, you know? I mean, this is personal to me. I'm invested in this because currently I have my nephew, and I have seen atrocities, like just for example, at Emerson. You know, it's an incredible school, however, it's a very low-performing school. So what I bring is my experience, my knowledge, and my passion, and my bold approaches to having our district to perform better. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, we got one more. Looking at my, sorry, I'm looking at my chat. So we have about 10 minutes left. So if you, folks have last-minute questions, please enter them in the chat box, but we want to give folks time to submit. And then we'll wrap up in about five minutes to give each of you an opportunity to sort of wrap things up. This question from one of our neighbors, what are some examples of how each of you have helped families navigate tough educational issues? And how will you use these experiences to help inform your work on the board? And I think we'll start with Adriana on that one and go to Krista.
There are so many examples, you know? It's like, which one of them, right? Tough situations, I can go back specifically where families wanted to change their two children from one school to another. And I went with them to the Davis Center. And they were told that they had to follow the process, right? There is a procedure in place that you need to follow. You need to go and speak to the principal, you know, have a dialogue and provide a reason of why you want to change your students to another school. And the mom asked, okay, so we set up an appointment to go with that and meet with the principal. We already did that, however, she said, you know, I really want to change my students because they were, actually, one of them was beat up in the bathroom, a special-ed student. And I asked her, I said, well, you need to ask them, you know, like, what is holding them back from, you know, you changing your children immediately, right? Because there were abuse, they were beat up in the bathroom. And literally, this is what the lady behind the counter did. She said, there you go, there is a policy in place, you need to follow the steps. But it is not in Spanish. So to make a long story short, I ended up sending an email to the superintendent and also to the chair of the board, and she's currently in the meeting, you know, with us. So I helped them to navigate those challenging, you know, realities that many of our families have. So we ended up taking their, the kids out of the school and then bringing them to another school where now they are thriving and doing incredible. That's just one example.
Thank you. Krista?
Would you mind repeating the question again?
Yeah, it was, what are some examples of how each of you have helped families navigate tough educational issues? And how will you use those experiences to help make decisions as a board member?
Thank you. I think a lot of my experiences come from my social work experience working with families. I can recall, and this was out of district, but a circumstance where I was working with a family with an elder who was taking care of a child who was in foster care. And they, the school had decided that they didn't want to admit a student because the family had been there before, and the family wouldn't engage the way that that school wanted them to. So that student who wanted to go to that school where they knew they would be successful was being held back because their family couldn't participate in the process, couldn't participate actively in the way that they expected every family to participate. Those types of situations just get me every time. I don't think we should ever punish students for what their families can or cannot do to support our traditional expectations of education. Every student, every young person is entitled to an education and entitled to be in a space where they feel good and safe and where they can learn. So I've helped families, you know, navigate the Davis Center. I've helped families through the child protection system. I mean, there's a lot of struggles that happen in those moments. And there's a lot of transition, and it's really hard on kids. And I've seen our schools do a really great job with that. And then I've seen our schools not do a great job with that. And I think that the most important piece of those interactions is to make sure that families and students feel supported, and school staff also feel supported. They do so much. I mean, we ask so much of our educators, of our support staff, of our administration. And I would hate to not acknowledge the hard work that they do. And I think that sometimes we all need to, we all need to realize that we should all be here to serve the students, we should all be here to support education. And when we come back to that kind of main tenet, I think things go a lot more smoothly. I can think of another story where I had, actually, you know, I'm going to stop there, but thank you.
Thank you both, and I expect that you both could answer this question for quite a long time. We're going to move towards closing remarks, but before we do that, I just wanted to say, one of the members of the forum said, District Four is lucky to have you both working hard for the community. Thank you both for your energy and attention to those voices that usually are not heard or invited to the table. So on behalf of District Four, thank you both for your candidacy. And thank you to the community members for joining us tonight. And I'd love to give both of you just a few minutes to, just to wrap up and talk about, you know, again, have an opportunity to interact with us for two more minutes. So I believe Krista, you'll go first, and Adriana, you'll close us out.
Fantastic. Well, I would just like to say thank you to all of you, all of our neighbors, and thank you, Leah, for that very kind comment. I feel incredibly honored to be in this race with Adriana. This has been an experience of a lifetime, so thank you. I just want to say, you know, I'm running for school board. I never, never thought I was going to be running for school board. But the thing that I'm most excited about is to do the work. The thing that I'm most excited about is to advocate for our kids and families. And I am really, really hoping that I can be that person who is able to help and provide a voice and advocacy at our school board for our most vulnerable, least-resourced communities who do not have a voice. I really want to ensure that we have responsible and proactive governance, ensure financial stability, demand racial equity, invest in our teachers of color, and empower parents and families. So thank you again. My name is Krista Mims, and I appreciate all of your engagement and hope that we can continue these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista and Adriana.
Thank you. There is a saying in Spanish, si queremos cosas diferentes, caminemos diferentes. If we want to have real change, we must work and do things differently. Currently, the system, I mean, the system has never really functioned for people of color. That's just the blunt reality. And we need to tackle that reality from the premise that we need to dismantle white supremacy within the institution of education because the seed of white supremacy lives sadly in the education system. And it is time for radical change. That means to attack the problem from the root, which is white supremacy. We need to end the prison, the school-to-prison pipeline. We need to come up with alternative solutions. So to ensure that Minneapolis is leading the nation in the way that we are graduating and providing all children with the equitable resources that they do need. And I want to thank the Neighbors Association for hosting this, for putting this together and bringing such an important issue to our community. We need to do things differently. Also, I would like to thank Ken Chang, he was the third candidate running for District Four. He just announced his endorsement to our campaign. And this is example of how I will work to overcome the differences and build coalitions. We need to work together to provide solutions for children. It pains me, you know, to see what I see in my neighborhood. I have never seen so many people homeless, you know, around the streets to the point that it's not even safe for me to let my nephew go to the park and, you know, ride his bicycle. You know, a lot of people are self-medicating and just enduring the pain of what the system has done to them. And we need to work with our children. That's the opportunity that we have now. That's the beauty that we have. And I would bring that shift that needs to be done as a board member. I have been invested and dedicated in this work for a long time. It's nothing new. Muchas gracias a todos y buenas noches. Thank you.
Thank you both, and thank you all for being with us tonight. The conversation was, is recorded. So for neighbors who were unable to join us tonight, we'll be posting it to our website, which is www.the wedge.org later on this week to share with friends and colleagues. But a huge thank you to all of our neighbors and a huge thank you to all of our candidates for a very enlightening and productive conversation. I think we are lucky to have such high-quality people running for the board. And I thank you all for your time. And with that, have a wonderful evening, and thank you.